Aloha mai kako, you are watching Hawaii Political Reporter.
You, as a free, beautiful, independent human being with inalienable rights, own yourself. As a result, you can do what you want with your own body and own the product of your labor. The implication is that it is morally wrong to initiate force against someone else or their property because to do so is to violate their rights. Therefore, all human interactions should be free of force, fraud, and coercion, and people should be free to exercise their rights, limited only by respect for the rights of others. When you learned "don't hit" and "don't steal," it wasn't unless you work for the government. When you learned "thou shalt not kill," it wasn't unless your dear leader gives you a gun and a uniform and a one-way ticket to the other side of the world. Government is force, an opinion with a gun, and force is a poor substitute for persuasion. Governments frighten us into thinking we need them, but with knowledge, philosophy, and technology, we are empowering ourselves and each other to have the courage to move past the paradigm of statism and restrain government to only moral uses of force, at least until we replace it with the cooperative, free-market solutions that will soon render it obsolete.
Aloha mai kako, you are watching Hawaii Political Reporter.
Aloha. With me now is RJ Hampton. RJ Hampton is running for Hawaii County Council District 5. I must confess, I know RJ. I like her a lot. I've worked with her previously. She's one of the few people that I know who actually walks the talk. She's been there in the trenches for years in this county. I truly believe she has, you know, the best interests of the people at her heart, and I'd like to introduce her, but before I do, I'm going to go over a few things that I know. RJ, I believe, is a pretty humble person in many ways, and you're not going to know a lot of the things that she's done. I'm going to just name a few. And they're, I mean, this is a local community, but these are significant. For us, for example, the Makua farmers market. She had a large part to do, or possibly the majority part, I don't know the exact detail in founding that market, okay? When she was working previously as a legislative aide, and she has that experience in office, okay? One of the things that was happening is there was Bill 234, this was the energy code, and what had happened, this was actually passed, and it was going to give Hawaii County the same standard as what we were going to have in Germany for an energy code. So what that meant is basically no single-wall construction, and also many additional costs. As RJ, I believe, will tell you shortly, somebody from the community brought that in. She got into action. This was just after the person she was working for got into office, so they kind of had a difficult start with it because they didn't have any running start, but the bill was already signed. It was set to go into law in six days, and RJ corrected that, so now, thanks to her, we have the much less expensive and preferable, in many cases, double, single-wall construction. She's also worked on something, okay, which I believe is extremely important, and that is the getting insurance for people in lava zone 1 and 2. She worked with the insurance companies, who are basically trying to make exorbitant, you know, basically, let's take it to the cleaner rates, okay, for the people in lava zone 1. Unfortunately, the person she was working for lost her office at that point, so she wasn't able to conclude that, but she did a lot of work on that. And we also have the alternative building code. We have bamboo. Okay, you can thank RJ for that and the work she's done, okay, that we can use bamboo. And also, there's a lot went into Leilani, okay? As far as, tell us a little bit about Leilani, okay, and, you know, what I understand happening there. Basically, the road or whatever it was that we were working on on Leilani.
Oh, yeah, again, it's interesting because it is the people that bring in the issues that make it work, county government work. And somebody came in, and they were concerned because a lot of people were wiping out on Leilani Boulevard. And so, you know, we tried to find out, how can we eliminate or at least mitigate this problem? And it was to go to the director of transportation in the Transportation Department and lay the issue out. And it was like, bing! You know, we've been toying with the idea of doing these stripes. I think they called it tiger stripes. And so, they went out to Leilani Boulevard, and they painted these stripes, which was like, you know, when, and if you've driven down Leilani and gone around the curve, you can see them. And it worked on a good, and they said, oh, wow, let's just do Kaikai Boulevard, you know? And it does bring attention to the curve because of your eyes. And so, it was all scientific and stuff, and, yeah.
That's one of many examples, and one of the things I think I've learned from you, RJ, and this is something I think a lot of us forget, we're always, at least I know I am often, thinking, oh, you know, the council sessions and all the big goings-on there and all this. But I think what you're telling us is really, for effective legislation and being an effective council member, a lot of this is just behind the scenes, okay? It's dealing and helping the people that you can without even getting into the council. It's dealing with the people in the county. So tell us a little bit about that process, and what goes on behind the scenes, and you have the experience here, and how you can help your constituents, so to speak, behind the scenes in doing some of the stuff that people may not generally be aware of.
Well, that's true, and my philosophy about government is to involve people. If we want to care about our district, then I think it's the councilperson's duty to bring the district together, and that's the way. You've got to delegate, like, every other Friday, there's a council board that comes out. And on that council board, there's all of the issues, ordinances, and these kinds of things. If I'm elected as your councilperson, I will make this a very transparent process. We study these boards over the weekend, and we write on them, and we do all those kinds of things, so that when we sit in the meetings, we know the direction we want to go, we know. And so, as issues come up, I know that they're on the board on Friday. I'm going to, I'm going to have my assistant, how do you say, notify all the people involved and bring them in.
And, you know, speaking of bringing them in...
Bring them in, and let them know what's going on, so they can decide whether this is...
So what you're saying is you're really trying to be a vessel to serve, okay?
That's part of the job.
You're a facilitator.
It's the job.
And you know, RJ, one thing, I like, and people, you know, there's what they call high level, which is basically the overview, this is in scientific terms and many things and computers, and there's low level. Now, low level is not like low level and important, it is the deep details that takes a lot of time, okay, comprehension and thought. And this is something I can say I'm positive, okay, that RJ is very good at, okay? And that is getting to the low-level details, and these are the things that make the difference. An idea, you know, typically, a lot of times, a bill may be named one thing, but is actually the exact opposite in reality, okay? And we have someone very sharp here with the experience who will get down to the bottom of that, I guarantee you. If you ever see her, pull her aside, okay? Ask her about anything, and ask her what's happening, and you're going to have an encyclopedia right there, okay, in front of you, because she knows what is going on here, and that's very important, too, okay? Because if a person doesn't really have the detail and the understanding of what's going on at the lowest level, they're going to be susceptible to a lot of BS, okay? And that's often what happens to us here. So, in office, okay, when you're, if and when you're elected, RJ, you, what would you start? Where would you start? I think I've heard before something about a good idea, a needs assessment or something? What, tell us about that.
Yeah. We were redistrict, there was a redistricting process two years ago, and two years ago, we were split differently, and so, there were a lot of people that don't even know what district they live in. That's the first thing you have to do. On a low-level scale, I have been very good at the day-to-day kind of issues, and I'm going to tell you something, it is the community that brings the issues to the office. It's the office who's supposed to be responding to these things. One of the problems is, you can't find anybody. You can't get to talk to anybody, and the reason you can't is because they're caught up in the entrapments of the office, all the, all the lunches, and all of the important people that they have to meet, and things that are offered to them. It's a distraction.
So all the external factors coming from the outside instead of focusing on serving your constituents?
It's, it's what makes effective politicians. That's how they get elected, year after year after year. If within the community, they're saying, "We don't want anything," an effective, you know, councilperson is going to work hard to make sure that that happens, because two years, four years, six years, eight years, they want to be reelected. And that's the way I want to be. I want to be somebody that's not just in and then thrown out. I really want to set a policy in the office that works, is well polished, and everybody's like, "Yeah, you can get RJ, you can find her."
And you know what else on that? You know, speaking of the districts and your constituents, we have a different district now, essentially, I mean, it's been, they've been redrawn, and we're really talking about bridging two, essentially, brother and sister, but still different communities, Lower Puna and Upper Puna. And I think you have ties and knowledge of both of those, okay? Because you have the, you know, the people you know in both, but also you've served in there before. So tell us a little bit about this district, and how you think it's unique, and what you might do to serve it. Would you, RJ?
Yeah, I will. I don't know how many people are going to agree with me about this, but I'm really serious. There's a cancer in Puna, and as an individual who has seen for 20 years the power base stay in the same place with the same tired people, why? Because nobody else shows up to become involved. Why? Because nobody demystified the process. And so, people are marginalized from the issues, and more people that are trying to push self-issues are coming in and getting in their way. In other words, the majority is terrorizing now the minority, and the minority needs to speak about these issues. You've got to find them. We've got to find you, because District 5 is only as good as the people who are participating in it. It's not for you to expect me to do everything, and this is the most important thing. It's research. When I talk about that I see something in a bill and I want it out, delete it or amend it, it is the legislative research branch. There's a whole group of people out there in government that have paid to do what they're supposed to do, and they're supposed to make us look good by getting things done.
I bet you're going to get them going, aren't you, RJ?
You know, what I've found is they like to work with me. Why? Because I see their guidance and their expertise, unless it's like, uh-uh, no way, it's not going to be like that. Thank you for your suggestion, but I can't do that, and I have to fight this side of the issue. And I want to tell you something, I just don't kiss up to anybody, and in this election...
I can guarantee you that. I mean, now, let me say something here now, and I got to tell you, we may have some very difficult things coming in the next couple of years, and I got to tell you, this lady, okay, will fight for the people, and she has got the guts. She will stand toe-to-toe with anything. So I consider her one of the strongest activists we have, okay, working for the people. So, you know, you have to do your research and find out what's important to you and all that, as she's been saying, but I can tell you for a fact, because I've been there and witnessed it, okay? This is no shrinking violet, and she's going to be there, she's going to be calm, she's going to listen, she's going to do what she needs to do for you, but when the time comes, okay, she will stand her ground for us. I guarantee you that. So, you know, give us a little specific, okay, if you can, on an issue right now, can you step us through something that you'd like to see changed or different, or you've talked about demystifying the process? Give us a little bit of a specific example, if you could, RJ.
Well, a lot of times, people have issues, and they want something done, but they don't understand the process, and so, it's important that they're educated. I want to call people who are wanting to participate in government. What I want to say about, I don't use the word too often, "politics," because politics just doesn't work for me. I think it's all going to go away as people become more honest and sincere about what they're doing in the world. We'll see politics just out the door.
I think that's wonderful, and I think a lot of people would love to see that, because what's happened now, essentially, to me, I think we still have the king, you know, and peasant mentality. That's the truth, okay? I mean, we have this top-down rule of the people, and I think what we're after is more democracy, okay, and cooperative, person-to-person ventures, in a sense, right?
What is it that is the biggest gripe you have out there? It's that most of the times, you elect people who think they know it all. Okay, I don't know it all. I can only tell you that I'm as good as the people that I pick to work with me for you, okay? I've been told to speak right to you, and I'm saying to you now, I'm the individual that you should hire. I'm the individual that will not waste your money. I'm an individual who works till 10 o'clock at night. I'm an individual who keep my office open till 8 o'clock, so that working people can come in, sit down, and talk to me about the things that they need to do. I will have a special number. You can reach me 24/7. Why? I have no children, I have no husband. You are my responsibility. It's that kind of advocacy that you have to have for a part-time job, and that's exactly what it is, a part-time job.
I got to say something here, RJ, on that also, okay? I mean, I think you have a macro knowledge, which is very great, also on that, not only the low levels, but a macro, but I have to say something else on this, too, okay? If it came down to it, okay, you actually have a strength there that a lot of people don't have, is that, but not having the children and stuff, you kind of can't be worked, because let's face it, politics can get very dirty, okay? And you can have, you know, people threatening you, coercing you, and all this kind of stuff, and I think you have an inherent strength there, and I know your character, and when you're just going to do what's right, you're a pit bull, period, okay?
I'll tell you, I, I, I worked in Harlem, okay? I worked in Harlem, and I got a lot of things done over there, and that is one hard community to, you know, the issue got to be, and it's, it's important that people...
I bet you remember a few, okay?
Oh, I can tell you...
That must be raising the hair on your back still, okay?
Oh, you know, and the thing about it is, I have to learn, and this is something you have, I know a lot of people have criticism about me, but a politician could talk a hole through a tin pot, but I want you to know that I am practicing something, and someone told me, and they said, "Listen and silent have the same amount of letters, and both of them, in order to listen, you have to be silent." Listen, in order to be, you have to be silent in order to listen. And so, that's the kind of councilperson that I will be. If you write me, if you email me, I'm going to get back to you within 12 hours. How's that? If you have an emergency, there'll be an emergency number. You can call me. I'll step out of the county council meeting, which I can, long as there's a quarrel, and talk to you, or have my legislative assistant talk to you and say that they will follow up, because this is the kind of person I am.
Yeah, and you know what? And you know what else? Not only is it the person you are, but I think since you've been on the other side and have advocated, you know what you would like to see, you know the process, you've seen it from the other side, too. So I think that gives you an empathy and an ability to better serve the people from the other side, because you've been on both sides, okay?
A woman that I really respect told me, "Oh, whether you're on, in the seat, or whether you're behind, behind the, behind the, how do you say, the table where you're testifying," she said, "You have the power." And I want to increase that power, so that we can benefit from it, that we can, I guess, feed off of me and feel really confident that I'm going to do what you need to do.
So you're talking about synergistically working together to build something greater?
Oh, my goodness, the point of getting dry mouth, yeah.
Okay, now, now, let's, if we can, let's segue a little bit into issues. I think you've got an idea, okay? And the issue is, a lot of people really have things they need, they want, they want to hear specifically. I bet you have some idea what some of them are going to be. Shall I start off with the first G, as in GMO?
Oh, my goodness.
What's happening with GMO, RJ?
It's, it's, it is one of the issues that I am dead against, and as a councilperson, I do believe I could even convince Gregor Iligon that, that his side has no bearing. DNA is DNA. The atoms of the universe have been putting us on for a long time, and the DNA is the code of life. You know, it was, it was us to be here today. Took multiple billions and zillions of years of mutations.
And evolution.
And evolution.
And strive.
But more I'm dealing with here is mutations, because that's the essence of genetic engineering, is to provide a mutant gene that has a specific, how do you say, purpose. We have initiative, I can't get into it, but what happens here is this is that the code of life, the DNA, is DNA, and they've been manipulating genes for far too long in the pharmaceutical, agricultural, cosmetic, all the ways you can think of, they've been trying to come up with a better mousetrap. I am for no more in addition.
So specifically on the scope here, I guess what you would say, you support the ban on GMO as it is, okay, which is basically no open-field transgenic GMO in this county? I mean, that's what you want, right? No open-field transgenic GMO?
What I'm going to say to you honestly is, I've got to read this ordinance, and I've got to read the bill that resulted into it, but yes, as you speak, I definitely am in agreement. The bill may not, and I think that it's in litigation right now, and that's my point. People are arguing this big money that's coming to argue this ordinance, and whether or not the county council has any say in this, in this bill.
Yeah, I mean, just the nerve of us trying to have some say in our own local government and environment. Jeez, what's wrong with us? And this is exactly what we're encountering, and you'll see the big money coming in, and I, I know RJ's honest, and she's not getting any of this, because she's on the people's side, and I know, actually, I'm going to break away and tell you a story. She told me earlier, I spoke to actually a friend of hers, and basically, she said, another X candidate, X or Y, was going to get an endorsement from a big GMO farmer, because they knew that this candidate would sell out, basically, and, you know, might say one thing, but in the end would do this, okay, would sell out, because they have big interests in there, okay?
They tread water.
Oh, yeah, so...
A lot of politicians tread water.
But I know you're not going to do that. You've just told us, okay, and basically, you're obviously against the GMO here as that situation.
I'm, I'm against GMO in principle since 1975. I can only tell you that while I was at Asilomar, I was doing a women's conference, but at the same time, there was a conference on genetic engineering and the moral and ethics of it. The scientists came together, the biologists, and all these people in this new field. So I've studied, and I've been following, and I know that mutations are not to be taken lightly, and so, until, I also believe in the precautionary, you know, principle. We cannot move, and this one is a no-brainer, folks. Your DNA needs to be protected, and some of these genes can be transferred over to your DNA and not be expressed in you, but expressed in your offspring's offspring's offspring's.
Yeah, and this is not even getting in, and I think people who watch this show know, we're not even talking about the outside money coming in, corrupting our community, potentially changing our biosphere, altering the bees, okay, and concentrating our food supply into a limited number of suppliers. This is not wise. But we could go on for that, but we need to go on to geothermal. What say you, RJ?
Well, if you're talking geothermal resources, you have to then put things in categories. Where I stayed, there was a steam vent, and a man made a big cup of coil, and he stuck it in a chamber, and he now has hot water going up to his house. Geothermal resources can, in one sense, can dry and kiln and car, but that's all ambient stuff, and you find a place that's really hot. As far as ORMAT technology, flash, steam, injection, chemicals, purple this, orange that, leach fields, leach ponds, all of this necessity is not good for our island. We have a 20-year lease, but this is one I want to say, it's exciting. In 2005, and I have to do more research on it, they hit magma. They brought up magma. Now, you know what that means? As it breaks down, there's radon, there's all kinds of things to where it comes, and one of the things that's in, is one of the things that's in it, it's called white gold, that's silica. When they brought about eight yards of this stuff up, the drill kind of melted and broke off, they built, brought this stuff up, it became a scientific wonder. Nowhere in the history of time has anybody been able to touch magma until 2005. A, ORMAT didn't tell anybody that they brought this strange stuff up, that it might have, how do you say, environmental consequences later on. It was 2008 before the scientists couldn't stand it anymore and had to have a conference on it. And at the conference, there were so many papers on the ramifications of discovering this stuff, to the point where ORMAT was touring with the idea of creating a $7 million project to put a chamber down where this chamber is, where you can tap into the magma and watch it and study it. My long and short of this, they violated their lease, they're only supposed to extract the heat and make electricity, so it might be a violation of the lease, and it also is a violation of the Hawaiians. They would be livid if they found out that somebody touched Madame Pele and brought her off.
And I think, I think the other thing is, and we kind of, I kind of labor this because there are a lot of people who really just don't understand why we have such a resistance to the GMO here, okay?
No geothermal.
See, I meant, excuse me, to the geothermal. Almost the same thing, in a way. I mean, it's two outside forces trying to shove their imprint on us, but the reason why is because there are people who are living in there whose health is affected. That's really what it is. And also, what really gets me, and we see, we saw this with the PLDC and other things, we have outside forces trying to take control of our community, okay, and come in, buy it, and bypass the people, just like we're nothing, like there's a bill, I think Harry was working on that one, where the state wants to be able to basically override our zones, our geothermal zones and such as that, I forget which one it is. So we're actually saying, hey, can we please have some control of our environment, some respect of our home rule, and some control of our process here, okay? That's what a lot of it is, and I believe what you're going to tell us, RJ, is that, you know, you're for the people's ability to control this geothermal as they wish here in this district. Is that...
It's kind of, but I want to say this, my whole principle about energy is it's a local issue. Where energy comes from is the next question. A lot of people talk about solar. I talk about the other S-word, static electricity. Goes back all the way, and if you research this thing, it has come so far, that they now send balloons up into the atmosphere, and they now have technology to where it brings it home to a local level. Imagine us being able to send up a balloon and have it charge our batteries because the electricity, and they have alternating current, and I don't profess to know anything about it, but I definitely believe that it's a local issue, and where you get your energy from. The other thing is, I truly believe that public utilities should be public utilities. They should be nonprofit, and they should be owned by the people, and there and then you'll see a significant...
So you don't have a love of Helco?
I don't have a love, I don't have a love of any big corporation that would take 50% of their profits from the greedy beast. And so, Hiko, Helco, and all of them have invested interest in keeping geothermal running. They certainly are putting a lot of money into it and to defend it. So the only people that really get rich here are the lawyers that are on both sides and trying to fight this whole thing.
Well, that's typical, a lot of them keep the people split and take the damage.
But how would I, as a county person, how does a county councilperson, how would I interact there? Whoa, I'd be up there every time there's an issue about it, and I would be proactive to find out, like Mike Kuta Kenny, which I have some kind of relationship with him, and I really want to understand why all those bumps are coming out on his face, because there are a lot of things that they use up there are carcinogenic. So I would be looking at their safety issues, monitoring their safety issues, calling EPA, finding out what they have to, you know, do and do.
I hear you.
So you have to be active on these issues. You may have to lobby on these issues and keep your, you know, keep people involved. A lot of times, issues come up, and what happens? They just get dropped, you know?
Well, I don't think this is one too easy to drop in this district, but...
And we have to get smart about how we all come together to talk about it.
Now, here's another one, and I know this is a big one, incinerator.
Oh, my goodness, it burns me up.
Okay. You got us on that one, but why does it burn you up, and how hot do you get?
Okay, for two reasons. There's a group out there that's trying to lead us towards zero waste, okay? She had a big concert or whatever, she came, she said, "We had this many people," and she held up this little bag of trash afterwards. If we all catch on to that, if we have incentives for people to be able to make money off their trash, how many people are going to be just giving it away? They'll be giving it to the individual that can get money, they can, they can now feel good about what they're doing, and they're putting back into their community. Somebody's got a job, five people, six people, 10 people, because the reality is, we're going to keep making waste. But how are we going to be smart about it? So if you have that side, and then you have the mayor coming in with the quick fix and the 30-year lease, if we stop making trash, and we've made a deal with them that they get to burn 250,000 pounds of trash a day, or something like that, and we don't, then the community gets fined. What's that about? So I think that we need to slow our roll, we need to really look at all the technology, and I was what, I was with Margaret really on it. We have to take back the RFP, and we really need to open it up to more people with better ideas.
Okay, so essentially, you're not dead-set against it, or you are dead-set. Can you give us a little more specific clarity?
Oh, I am not into incinerating anything, okay? They have not proven to me anything. They can talk till they're black and blue, or till they're blue in the face. I will say, we've got to do something about it, and so, there are other technologies. What is it, gasification? Are we against gasification? Are we against ways in what, we, we separate all our trash, and we do something with the compost, there's a heat exchange there, or do we say, everybody, take responsibility for your compost, take it for your scraps, beginning to our... Beginning to understand that garbage is garbage, trash is trash, and you might be able to get paid for your garbage? And you might be able to get paid for your trash? So it's up to us to work with the farmers and the small gardeners to be able to do what we need to do to bring it away from the county and make it easier on their landfill. It's a personal thing that becomes a community thing, that becomes a county thing, that becomes a state. And you never know where it's going to come from, you know?
You know, RJ, I guess, and I'm going to maybe ask Kim, he works on the show some, to come in and ask you a couple of questions. But I think I know the answers of these, but I have two questions for you right now. One is very important to me, and I think to a lot of voters. And that is, if you are elected, okay, who is the ultimate boss? Okay, meaning, okay, let's say that you believe in an issue a certain way. And maybe you've been, and I know you'll advocate for it, you'll try to convince us, to educate us. But let's say the people want something different than you want, okay? Are you their vessel and their representative? Are you going to vote their way? Or do you believe, you know, from principle or whatever, that you may end up voting a different way? How would you consider your, your role and your style or, you know, actual acting philosophy in this regard?
You know, that's a good question. Because as a, as a council person, I know who the boss is. You know, I have a song that goes, you know, who's the boss? The Red Tape Brigade is the name of it. And I can only say honestly, this is, I can't do this job without you. It's you out there with the brilliant minds and the expertise and the greater mousetrap or the best thing since sliced bread. You got to come to me. It's, it's that way. Get involved. If I'm elected, I'll be there for you, and we'll fight. Will I go against the community? If it is scientifically going against the, you know, what is natural or anything like that, and I see they want it over here, no, I have to go. But any issue that touches the community and family and will improve the quality of life that they have, I would have a vote against it. And I can say I don't find too many issues within District 5. And that's who I'm supposed to be working for, the people in District 5. And what benefits District 5 will benefit the rest of the island. So I can only tell you this. If it is so important that I vote the way you want, I'll go into my office and I will think about it, come out and let you know. But probably more than less, I will be going with the people.
Yeah, and I think, and so you're talking basically in an exceptional circumstances where you might differ, okay?
But not because anybody, I'm going to get something, or they told me if I vote a certain way.
Well, that's like, for example, I know that Roy Lazzano, I had him on. He said, as long as it's not hurting any, they're two basically bedrock things, okay? That what you can't do is you can't hurt someone else's property or them, okay? So as long as the law, I won't pressure on that. And I think you gave an honest response, and that's very important, okay? So you hear it, and I think probably almost every issue, you're going to be in sync anyway. So it's really a non-issue.
Well, I think, you know, I learned something when I went to the Libertarian, you know, that meeting. It was really an eye-opener. We tried to figure out what we were. It's a nonpartisan race, so. I really believe that I can't pass legislation that way. I can, I, I can't do something over someone's dead body or whatever. And it's very important for me to not get in the way of people's lives and livelihoods.
Now, I hear exactly where you're going, and I'm glad you clarified it. What you're saying is within the respect of the Constitution, natural law, decency, common law, okay? So you're, what you're saying is you're not going to try to use force, okay? And I think I hear what you're saying. Basically, you're saying, as long as the situation is moral, I'm with the people.
There's, there's no power on earth that's weaker than the power of one. I think that's what we really have to understand. And so therefore, you know, I've been into unity ever since I met my mentor, Danger Stories Williams. And they called him Dangerous because he talked, I got to say this, he talked to white people. And he said, if you can't talk to them, who are you going to talk to? And this is Laura Fillmore. And I, I've carried that with me. I can talk to anybody and, and be with them. But we're still going to have to get down to those levels of disagreement and rehate. And where are we going to come to it?
You can't keep everybody happy.
But opinion change of opinion is called conversion.
So RJ, on, yeah, and I'm sure, you know, we all learn every day. Okay, so RJ, please let us know, and I think we know the answer here. Do you have any special interest money coming in? Is there any, anybody you're bound or tied to? Who are you working for here, really? Is there any, any external influences coming into your, to your campaign or anything?
Yeah, no. Come on, bring some on. No, I'm only kidding. No, because number one, I have a hard time asking people for money that doesn't have any. You know what I'm saying? And it's inflation, and it's eating into everything. This is why I'm a fan of public funding. I really am. And it evens the playing field, and it opens up the race to more people who wouldn't normally, you know, you got to go raise money, put signs up, but you don't have the signs, you know, this kind of thing. This is what we're experiencing right now. If you get some backing, you know, the Sierra Club, but they didn't see me as, you know, a viable candidate. And so they chose someone else. I was not invited to, you know, I don't know, it is what it is, but I wouldn't take it.
I don't know that anybody, I don't know that anybody ever got invited for that. So RJ, I think, I think we pretty, have a pretty good idea, okay, where your heart is here, okay? And you can say, I mean, there's no, tell us, I mean, is there any special interest money or anything coming in that's going to, that is or will be buying you, okay? I mean, tell us, I mean, what are you going to do once you're in office? Who is the boss, and what's going to happen if money comes at you?
If it's money that's coming, that they want to do something for the community, they want to help me get the money to build a library in Mountain View or to get the money after the $800,000 study to build a library in Pohawas. If they want to help by, you know, soliciting and giving us money without us having to go through the grant process. If, if they want to throw money at things because we've made memorandum agreements with nonprofit organizations to make the thing happen, then I'm going to take your money because it's a matter of public issue. But if you want me to do something for you, uh-uh, I'm not your candidate. And I didn't ask for any money.
So to be clear, so what you're saying, of course, if it's going to benefit the public, you're going to work with them. But I, what I'm saying specifically, and I think you've just told us, if they're trying to buy you or to do something that would be at best controversial or perhaps wrong for the community, what are you going to do? What's your response?
I see the District 5 voters being very crucial. The mayor knows that, and a lot of people on the county know that, county council know that. And I know that when they look at me, they say, oh, my God, if they select her, we have no hold. You don't know which way she's going to flow. You don't know. And there's many issues that come up. I can only tell the people, I just cannot. I just get crazy when people try to control me. And I can say this, whoever wins, I will respect the seat. I may not respect the individual, but I will always respect the seat they hold.
And I think, RJ, as we said it before, and I can guarantee you this, okay? If RJ believes she's doing the right thing for the community, okay? There, there's no one's going to push her to something different, okay? I can tell you that.
But I will be coming to the community to find out.
No, no, I know. But no, that's what I'm saying, of course, with the input and such as that. So RJ, I think there are some things, Kim, Kim works on the show too, and he has some ideas. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to ask him to come in and ask you some questions. Maybe I'll be back, but if not, thank you, sis, okay? I appreciate it. Thank you for running for us.
Thank you for giving me the time.
No, no, thank you for being here and enriching us, okay, with the knowledge.
I hope I kind of made it clear where I stand.
I think so, okay? And also, just please keep in mind, you know, always, you have a website too, which we're going to get to in a second at the end, maybe you'll tell us. But, you know, check her out yourself, talk to her, she's accessible. You know, that's the best thing you can do. I mean, don't read, don't look at the signs, talk.
All right, I'm here with RJ, and I've got some burning questions like, what is your one thing? Is there just one thing you're really, you're really thinking about? Is there just one thing?
There's lots of things I'm thinking about.
One main thing? Give me the top.
One main thing, accessibility.
Accessibility.
I'm serious about accessibility.
That people can access to, speak to you.
Uh-huh, I love talking to people.
Okay, let's talk about issues. Let's do it like David Letterman, Top 10. Let's start. Number 10.
Number 10, roads in limbo.
Roads in limbo? What does that mean, roads in limbo?
You know, roads that are not being taken care of by either the state or the county because nobody wants to take responsibility. In the subdivisions.
I got you. But some subdivisions do pretty good and some don't.
Yeah, they do.
Okay, all right, number nine.
That's why it's at the, you know, up there.
Right, right, number nine.
Number nine, hmm, I'm trying to prioritize here. I guess I want to move recreation down a little bit, but I would say number nine would be... Because there's so many I'm thinking about there.
Oh, don't, just make it easy. We're going to have fun.
It would be connectivity, more bus transportation limits.
Absolutely.
Trying to figure out what's going on.
Especially up in the upper parts where you can't get to the bus.
Yeah, and try to change Tom Brown's idea of not wanting a bus to the airport.
Okay, bus to the airport, that's a good idea. All right, let's go to number eight.
Number eight, need water is like number three. Number, number eight would be important to me. Priority is to use my discretionary funds to the best of my ability to serve the community.
All right, discretionary funds.
About $100,000.
There you go. That's a nice piece of pie for the underserved, right?
That's if Billy gives it to us.
If they give it to us. All right, okay, let's go to seven. What do you think? Pick another one down there.
Number seven, I think, is recreation.
Okay, recreation's an interesting thought.
Oh, yeah, I got priorities on recreation because I think there's not enough of it. And it has to be organized so that the kids can benefit. And I think that within recreation, we begin to get more after-school programs.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah, so the parents can get a little break and they don't have to rush off.
Yeah, I know. And here, if you come from the mainland, you come here, there's really not a whole lot of stuff to do. So I think that getting things involved, and that really doesn't cost a lot of money. That's more like effort, right? Community involvement?
Yeah, community involvement.
Boy, I know that's up there on your list, so.
Oh, man, I would put that at four. So now we're at what?
Oh, we were at seven. Let's go to six.
Number six, number six on my list would be to mend the boundaries of our district.
Mend the boundaries of our district? This is, you're talking about, wow, how can you have Seaview and Mountain View in the same district? Yeah, I think that that's right up there with some of this. Okay, let's get to five.
Number five, water issue.
Water, water issues. I go to the watering hole, and I fill up my five-gallon jug. I see people there getting a lot of water. You know, we got excellent water. One of the reasons I'm here is for the water, can't you tell? Oh, let's go to four.
Well, I want to say something about the water.
Go ahead, talk about water.
Because there are, there is an accessibility for it. It's going to take money improvement and everything like that. But in terms of getting into homes, that's what I'm talking about. I'm talking about using water for volunteer fire, getting more places where they can get the water that they need to do what they need to do.
You know, that's an interesting subject because up there in that upper area, it rains 200 inches a year for a lot of us. So water isn't a giant issue. I mean, we get, we get more than we can stand. So I think that that's one of the things, if you go down in the coast.
Potable water, I think I'm talking about.
There you go. Something for drinking.
Potable water.
Not necessarily just the stuff coming off your roof.
Because people with not a lot of money can't really afford sophisticated filtering systems.
Right, right.
You know, so I don't know, but water is on my mind. Because water is on my district's mind.
Absolutely. I understand that, especially down in Seaview area. So this is a real tough thing because you've got some real different issues down there in Seaview than you do up in the top.
Right, exactly.
So we got to kind of mend those. Is that what you're talking about? Mend the, the boundaries of our districts?
Yeah, and like you said, water's not a really important issue up here. You know what I'm saying? Accessibility to water, potable water down in, in our district, you've got to go a little ways.
Down in the lower areas of our district.
And so if there was another station closer to the community, if we could deal with the community issues. So I'd be working with the water board and seeing what we can do. And here's the other thing, can I say this?
Go ahead.
A county council person is only as good as what they can get on the CIP, okay? And that's to get your projects in the budget. You can have a whole lot of ideas of what you want to do.
So most people don't even know what a CIP is.
What do they call it? Capital Improvement Project.
Right, so you got to get in the budgets before you can even bring it up as a possible.
Well, you bring it up, but you got to fight hard to get it on the list and then get somebody. So that's why people get disenchanted in their counseling people because sometimes it takes four years to take something enchanting and through to get it up to the list.
Right, right. Okay, so let's, we're down to what, the bottom three? Where are we down to four, three? Let's try three. Just give me your top three, three number ones, starting with three.
Oh, number three is to reduce our dependence on importing oil.
I love it.
And imported food.
I love it.
Okay.
Imported food.
Save the best for last because 85% of our food is bought somewhere else. And yet, we have 60% of the land, irritable land, or I guess irritable land, or whatever you want to call it, to grow food on that we're not utilizing.
And a lot of the waste that we're dealing with is coming in with that 80% of stuff that we're buying because it comes with the marketing packaging if we got the farm. You're big on the Makouu markets and all the local markets so we can buy the local stuff. That helps us cut down your garbage.
Oh, more farmers' markets. And the other thing, the less we import, the less invasive species we bring in.
Oh, well, that's, that's probably up there with two or one or beyond.
Yeah, Christmas trees just make me angry.
All right, the ones that glow in the dark. Okay, how about a two?
Number two, affordable housing.
Affordable housing. Affordable housing is huge. So you're not talking about, everybody needs to have this thing that's 20,000 square feet. You're talking about.
No, I like your idea.
Oh, the small houses.
The small houses, under 1,000 square feet, no code needed.
Right, especially if they're not hooked up to the grid.
Yeah.
Let's just, let's just throw this out here for you guys. Okay, 1,000 square feet or less, you're on ag land, and you got less than 1,500 watts worth of solar panels. You're not hooked to the grid. You're 100%, no, 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 we don't need a permit. I think I could deal with it. Okay, what, number one, and a drum roll, number one, what do we got?
Most important issue. I know it would.
Doesn't matter, we can have two or three number ones. What are the big, the big?
To make sure we don't go over the edge and that we're ready to deal with the volatile economy that we're getting ready to deal with.
I'm with you. You know, and this is tough. How do you, how do you campaign with a group of people sitting out there in front of you? And they go, oh, everything's fine. It's been fine for so many hundred years. It's going to keep being fine. But there's a few people around, I noticed some of my neighbors are kind of digging in. They're telling me, okay, you better get ready. So you're of the opinion that we better get ready?
Well, the country that would allow you to have all this wealth is the same company that's ready to foreclose on your wealth, to take it away from you because we have no guarantees. And all that is happening now in the Obama administration, ignoring the Congress and saying, I'm going to run it my way. He's not focusing on the economy, and so there's trillions and trillions of dollars of debt. And we are the ones that have to pay it all over the world. And so I, I just want to deal with it. I think I'm competent to.
So you're saying 17 trillion's no big deal unless, say, they raise the interest rate to two or three or four or five percent, huh? to two or three or four or five percent, huh? Oh, yeah, and just think, when Volcker was in office, what was it, 22% inflation?
You're making me mad.
Okay.
You're making me angry.
All right, I know you're passionate, and we don't, we don't, okay, but I know you're passionate. Now, I have a really big question for you, because I heard Ross talk about you, and it really got to you, the people that have nothing, that sometimes you just, we got to go, "Hey, neighbor, come on over and take a shower, here's the shower, I'm going to help you out, you know, your friends are giving you the hairy-eyed bone, go, 'Hey, man, tell him I'm here.'" No, this is my neighbor, I'm going to take care of him, we're all on this island together, we're together, I know you're there. What happens? Now, I know this has got to strike a chord. I know there's people out there that really don't need, but are taking of these social services. What do we do? Is there a way? I mean, is there anything we can do about people that really are taking unfair advantage of the system? Is there anything we can do about that?
Like I said before, we are not born corrupt, and I truly believe, except for your mother's tit, you're not born greedy, okay? And so I think if anything, it is a county issue, that they're on the dole, and that what we need to do, and what we have to do, is try and understand these people that are taking all this, and I think it's their job to do a better screening.
A better, so?
A better screening. I don't know how they screen now.
Specifically, I, I'm with you, but specifically, is there any one thing where there's a line drawn, where you might draw a line and say, "You know that line, we need to move that line a little bit to the left or the right"?
I bet I see somebody with food stamps, and they're getting into a Maserati.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? If someone's got food stamps, and I know that they live in, like, you know, they live in wine, I don't know, where they got-
Out of our district.
Out of district.
Not in our district.
Not in our district, probably Four, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, oh, in Four, yeah, for sure.
In Four, it's kind of like, really, as I go to the grocery stores and everything else, it's not that I judge people by the way they look, they might be going to the good free box, I don't know. But I know that there are people out there that I'm surprised they're on food stamps. I can't say that it's a bad thing, and it helps people out when they really need it.
Right, right, the people that really need it.
And I, I don't know how to really, I don't know how to, when you come to an island, I really don't know how you know that, because we have all these people coming, "Hey, do I know you, 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 you." They don't know you, so you get what you get.
We get them in the benefit of the doubt when they first walk in the door, but then they kind of got to prove themselves.
And it's a complaint-driven thing.
Oh, that, that burns me, the complaint. They said that in Bill 270. By the way, I got to throw this in. We were in there fighting for Bill 270, there were 300 of us in the council chambers. They escorted us outside and passed the bill, and I want to tell you, this lady was in there with us.
I remember that one. We were like, "Oh, my God, and we, I was so happy you all followed." It wasn't, I led you out. It wasn't, they escorted us out, we had ourselves a little mini demonstration in front of the cameras. It was powerful.
And for the mayor.
And for the mayor.
And thank you, Ross, yeah. Anyway, I'm going to tell you, this lady's got passion. This lady has fought beside me, you know, and you guys know how crazy I am, that's why they call me Crazy Kim, right? And she is one of my favorites, and I'm going to tell you, I know one thing, when she stands in front of Billy Canoid, he isn't going to push her over. She's going to stand up for you and me. That's what I know about this lady. Now, you got to make your own decision about who you vote for, but I'm voting here, this is my vote.
Oh, my, thank you for that, and I know it's a tough vote. It's a tough vote to get, folks. It's a tough vote.
That's right. She told me when we first, the first time I saw her, and she said she was running, I says, "Well, what are you doing for money?" She says, "I'm taking $1 from each person." And I looked at her, and I handed her a $20 bill, and I said, "I've never made a campaign contribution in my life." And I said, "Go buy you some signs." And I wish I could give you more.
And I did.
Good for you.
But I didn't want asking any more money, and the other thing I want you all to know is, I'm not doing any sign waving. Maybe I'll do one at the end, right before, before the election, but I don't believe in sign waving, I think it's distracting, it's-
Tell me about those signs. You said something about some handicapped person's making your sign?
Oh, a guy, his name is Michael, he said he was food for the, you know, for the flies, and we gave him a job.
All right.
My signs are hand, some of them are OfficeMax, and some of them are designed, but most of my signs that you see or you're stealing are done by a very good sign man. His name is Michael, I don't know his last name, but I, you can get his number from me if you call me. That's the other thing, I'd like to give the-
Go ahead.
My telephone number. My telephone number where you can reach me for my campaign is 965-7270. You can go find me on the web at www.electhampton, H-A-M-P-T-O-N, dot com. And it is there that you can send me messages, or tell me to get lost, or whatever it is. I say criticism is just as fine as a compliment, and I learn from criticism, and I'm ecstatic when I get compliments.
So that's www.electhampton.com.
That's right.
I don't think we can forget that. Elect, that's what we're doing, elect. You're electrifying. RJ, you are electrifying, and I want to thank you for running. We really need a person like you running.
Oh, wow.
I am very pleased.
You just, you just, guys.
I know you're here to fight for us, so give her the gloves. I think you should have some boxing gloves out there.
Well, watch out when I take them off.
It's just here to woo for us, too.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, even if I, should I not win, the fight doesn't stop for, I'm not going anywhere.
But we're talking in the everyday office.
Yeah.
We're here.
Everyday, that's the most important.
This, this person is fighting for you whether she's in office or not, and she's done it both ways, and she's got the experience, and she can get things done without a council meeting. She knows where to go, she knows how to administrate, and she's tough, and that's what we need right now. We got some tough times coming, this is a tough campaigner right here.
Oh, boy.
Thank you very much.
Horrible news out this July 4th Eve. A massive poll by Gallup shows that Americans' sense of freedom is plummeting. Gallup surveyed 1,000 people in 120 nations on how satisfied they were with the amount of freedom in their nation. Only 79% of Americans in the poll were satisfied with the amount of freedom they enjoy, down from 91% in 2006, the last time Gallup ran the poll. 79% doesn't even put America in the top quartile of the 120 nations tested. New Zealand topped the poll with 94% satisfied with their freedom. Australia, Cambodia, and Sweden followed, all ranked at 93%. Gallup cited economic concerns as one driving force for the decline, but pinpointed governmental corruption as well. 80% felt that entrenched corruption is now a freedom problem, where in 2006, only 59% thought it was. According to Gallup analyst John Clifton, perceived widespread corruption in the U.S. government could be on the rise for several reasons, including the significant media attention on issues such as the IRS targeting of conservative groups and NSA leaks.
Take it from Zero Hedge and tweeted by our friend at Counterbalance T on Twitter, "Wall